All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hello and good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending our drop-in Q and A session regarding the fiscal impact analysis tool. It looks like we have more than 100 people, so that's great. Tells us that you all are engaged and anxious to get this thing turned in to us by the deadline. So, the ground rules for today is, you know, because of the size of the group, we're going to ask that you all put your questions under the questions banner at the bottom, towards the bottom of the screen, and then, you know, we'll read the question out loud, and then you attempt to answer the question, and if we need clarification, we may call on you to raise your hand to provide better clarification. So with that said, we'll go ahead and get started.
Just a reminder that this session will be recorded, just so that we can make sure we capture all the questions and we're able to provide any additional guidance if we need to afterwards.
All right, Robert, you want to go ahead and jump right in?
Yeah, so Christine mentions that the rate is not populating in the community living tab. Christine, is this, I believe you might have sent an email regarding the eight-person home, is that correct? And you can, oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that, and we'll kind of just show again the components that need to be inputted in that tab. But, hi, everybody, so this is Drew Smith again with Alvarez and Marcel. To those of you who were on the call last week when we did the original walkthrough of the workbook and some of the modifications we were going to be making to the fiscal impact tool, thank you, and thank you for all the feedback. Again, you know, as we're trying to build this out to be used by all of the agencies, understanding that everybody operates differently, getting that feedback and having this kind of live testing and kind of this live iterative process is helpful to us, and hopefully, we're getting responses out in a timely fashion so that agencies can work on getting this filled out. To start us off today, so structurally, I think what we're hoping this can be is a little bit more of a work session as folks who've had more time with the tool to put in some questions there that we can just work through and get answered in real time so that you all have what you need to be filling out the tool on your end. But after our session last week, there were a couple of themes and some of the questions that were asked, but we just want to start off by talking through some of those components so that we're all thinking about this in the same way, and then go into any new questions that the group might have, as Robert said, through that question box. So, to start off, there is one technical issue with the workbook that has been raised for our attention that we have tested and verified that it is still a working issue. That is the eight-person community living group home setting that does not have a geographic differential, is not populating the rate. And so, it is working for eight-person homes that do have a geographic differential, it is just not populating for homes that do not have a geographic differential. This is something that we thought we had gotten fixed in the last release of the tool, it is still not operating properly. So, we are working on a solution for that. Agencies who do not have eight-person homes, this next update to that component of the tool should not be impactful, that's really the only update that we have planned right now. So, your version of the tool that was sent out, I believe, Robert, on Monday with the updates should still be fine, it's really for just those eight-person group homes without the geographic differential that we'll be making an update for. A couple of other items or themes that we saw in the questions, so a common question was around the fiscal year to be using as the PCIS II data input. So, really, what we want to capture is a full fiscal year. So, you know, of course, fiscal year '21 would be, you know, that full year, but for agencies that want to make sure that you're also capturing the rate increase that went into PCIS II, I think backdated to April of this year through the ARPA funds, that's fine, and as long as, again, we're just using a full 12-month period. So, if you're going to use something outside of a standard fiscal year, all we ask is that you note that to us so that we know it's not a July 1 to June 30, but it's a different time period. So, 12 months is the key there, just to make sure that we're getting a full year of PCIS II revenues, understanding that there might be a little bit of a shift in how agencies are doing that, we just want to make sure that we're aware of that as the analysis is conducted. Another question that we saw in the questions from the last webinar was around which rates are included in the tool. So, as folks might recall, Robert started us off last week talking about the rates being funded at 86% of the fully loaded rates, and that is what is included in the tool, so the rates that are populating are based off of that 86% funding level. Another common question was related to the inclusion of COVID-specific supports, and so, you know, example of that would be homes that have an additional eight hours or additional hours added in based off of making up for changes in day program availability. So, what we're asking is that COVID-specific supports or additions not be included in the projections of LTSS or the PCIS II data, just so that we can get a, you know, what we would include as a quote-unquote "standard" or typical year that does not have the COVID add-ons included in that. Another question that had come up a few times was the idea of, you know, for the LTSS side, what should we really be inputting as the value? Should it be what's authorized in the plan, or should it be what we think the person's actually going to use in the plan? And so, really, we want to get the closest around what you think the person is going to be using and what you, as the agency, are going to be billing for. So, again, as this movement into fee-for-service, only services that are used are services that will be billed, and so that's what we're trying to get at. And so, I think that part of that is looking at what is in the plan, what are those authorized services, and then, understanding for day services, for example, where there's the capacity to add some hours in there for the authorization purpose, just for flexibility, what is it that you really think out of those hours somebody's going to be using? And so, those used hours, actual used hours are going to be driving billing, and that's what we're really trying to capture here is, what do you project the revenues through the billing of LTSS to look like? So, really, really, what is the planned hour, the planned used hours not be necessarily just authorized hours? And then, last common theme that we saw that I wanted to mention was around dedicated hours or dedicated supports. So, there were a couple of questions around, you know, the tool is built to assume that the input for dedicated supports would be on a daily basis. And so, some people ask, well, what happens if they only use dedicated supports on the weekends, or they use it five out of seven days, but not all seven days? So, that's where, you know, I think we're going to ask that you do a little bit of that kind of backend that to account for that. So, what we want to get is, on average, how many days, daily units of support would be used? And so, if it's only going to be five days out of the week, not all seven days, then taking a proportion of that and dividing it by the five days so that you kind of account for that difference, or you account for how many units in the week are going to be used, not necessarily on a daily basis. So, again, this isn't to prescribe what the PCC is going to look like, or the authorization is going to look like on a daily basis, but we're trying to capture, you know, in general, or on an average day-to-day basis for dedicated hours, how many hours do we need to make sure, you know, we're counting for from the billing side, but then, you know, as you're thinking about it from a plan side of what would be authorized? So, you know, there is going to be a little bit of trying to kind of fit your model or an individual's specific support needs into the tool. The tool does not allow it to be so flexible where we're just selecting certain days that hours are going to be provided, and then the tool taking care of that multiplier for you. There would be the need to do some of that on the backend. So, I think those are the common things that we saw throughout the questions from last time. I know that people have gotten a little bit deeper into the tool, there are some other questions that have likely come up, and so, Robert, I can pass it over to you if you want to maybe start taking a look at some of the questions that have been coming in, and we can start working through them. I do want to just note, we, you know, some of the questions that have come up have been technical questions around the tool or around the rates, some have also been policy questions. So, Rhonda Workman and Patricia Sosoki are also with us today to talk about some of those kind of policy or programmatic questions to make sure that we're addressing what people are running into.
Yeah, great, thank you, thank you, Drew. So, there's a comment regarding the original email that we sent with the tool. This individual has not received the updated tool on Monday, so if you have not received the updated tool, it went out Monday evening, just please send me an email at robert-white number two at maryland.gov, and I'll put it in the chat a little later. So, Drew, there's a few questions regarding rates not populating, but my guess is that they are probably making the same mistake that I made when I called you late one evening, having the same difficulty. So, if you wouldn't mind walking them through what's required in order to get the rate to populate, that would be great.
Yeah, not a mistake, Robert, by any means. It's just, so there are a couple of required fields, and I assume, I think the questions that I've seen in the, what's been submitted so far have been around community living group home. So, the community living group home tab does have the most kind of required field to get the rates to pull up. So, if you remember, meaningful day, the rate is just standard for everybody in the service, and so it's a direct multiplier. Here in community living group home, there are three primary components to get the rate to populate that must be considered. So, first is home type, so let me make this bigger so that they can see it a little bit easier here. So, first is home type, so again, we have with overnight supports, without overnight supports, and with overnight enhanced. So, I'm going to pick first our with overnight. The second that needs to be identified is, does it have geographic differential or non-geographic differential? So, in our example, I'm going to say yes. And then, last is home size. So, again, under the new rate methodology, the home size is a key driver into what the rate itself is going to be. So, here, I'm going to pick a three-person group home. So, you'll see, once I've selected those three buckets, it will pull the rate in for the home. So, what you'll also notice is, it populates this rate for all eight participants in the home, the workbook does not clear out for a three-person home the other five potential entries. And so, you know, just be mindful of, you know, making sure that we're not picking a three-person home, but then adding in four, five, six different people, because the workbook won't be able to correct for that. So, the next piece that we worked through, right, is we asked for participant initials, so I'm going to use myself, I'm going to use Robert, and I'm going to use Patricia as the three people who are living in this home. The next component of this is going to be how many days per year do we imagine that services are going to be utilized? So, we're going to set this at 360 days for everybody in the home. And so, again, what we see then is, we've got the rate itself, the multiplier of number of days gets us to our annual base, then for each participant within the home. The next component that's going to populate the rates to pull up is around dedicated supports. So, again, we have to select, does this person need dedicated supports or not? If they do need dedicated supports, is it a one-to-one or a two-to-one? So, here, I'm going to select myself as needing two-to-one, Robert needing is one-to-one, and Patricia not needing any. And then, we need to put in how many dedicated supports per day. So, again, this is based off of a quarter-hour unit, and so, I'm going to assume that I need eight hours, or I need eight units per day, which is two hours, Robert needs 12 units per day, Patricia, we don't need to input anything because she doesn't have dedicated support in her plan, and so then, again, we get our total for our dedicated support, and then we get the annualized per-participant billing. And so, you'll see that we've got the base rate plus the dedicated supports for Robert and I, and the base rate for Patricia. That then adds up to the total home value. So, for those who have been having issues getting the rate to populate, it's likely that there might be an item that is not selected in these top three, so I would just recommend going back and checking to make sure that all three of those boxes have input.
So, Drew, if we are delivering a different number of hours of direct, or units of direct support one day, like, you know, it varies day-to-day, then how should I calculate that?
Yeah, so, again, I think this is where you really got to think about the participant and be thinking about what does it look like? I would do it on a weekly basis for somebody to then, you know, kind of build it out to an annualized process. So, the way that the workbook calculates is based off of the total number of days per year. We've identified that the person is going to be utilizing supports, and so here, it's 360. And so, again, if I'm going to say, well, on a weekly basis, I think that I'm going to need, let's say, 50 units of dedicated supports, and that's going to be 10 units for five days out of that week, then what I'm going to do is put this in at, I'm trying to do my quick math on the fly, so I've identified, I need to then take my, we'll pull up my calculator, we can all do this together, so if we take 50 units divided by seven, right, because we're going to need to do that on a daily basis, then that's going to be 7.14 hours per day on average. So, I'm going to, that's going to be my then input for that participant, understanding it's not really going to be 7.14 per day for that person, but from a fiscal projection perspective, we've got to account for the calculation of the 360 days in total. And so, while it's going to be operationalized at 10 hours per day, in the spreadsheet, we're going to put it in at 7.14.
Great, thank you. Next question, if we already sent in the fiscal impact analysis tool, do we have to do the revised version? No, just send me an email letting me know that you populated the prior version, and we'll transfer the data over into the revised version. The FAQ document recently sent out with the tool says that billable time for CDS includes transportation. This conflicts with previous guidance documents sent out in September. Can you confirm that whether transportation to and from CDS services is considered billable time? Rhonda, would you mind taking that one?
Sure, absolutely, and Stacy, thank you for sharing that question with us. Transportation to CDS services, meaning the staff driving to the person's home, is not a billable time, and transportation from the person's home for the staff to return back to the agency or to go back to their home is not billable time. However, when they're with the person, after they meet the person at their home or in the community, maybe they're engaging CDS services and there's transportation to go from one community activity to another, that would be considered billable time. Thank you for sharing that question.
Thank you. What is the due date? The due date is January 5, 2022. Okay, Jennifer, I hate to put you on the spot, if you don't mind offering some clarification, just take yourself off, you made a comment, this is for CLGH with a geographical differential? Okay.
Hey, Robert, this is Donna. What's Jennifer? Who were you referring to?
Um, Blakesley.
Okay.
But we might have already addressed her question, I see the...
Hi, I'm here, I'm here. Hi, I just did everything that you said to do to make sure I populated what I needed to on that top section of community living group home, and the rate, the LTSS rate is still not coming up.
Interesting. So, did you put in the same inputs that I just entered on?
I did.
And yours?
I did.
Okay. Are you using the workbook that was sent out on Monday?
Yes.
Interesting. So, this might be an Excel issue. Let's do this, maybe if you can connect with Robert through email, then maybe we can take a look at it. It should be functioning, this is the exact same tool that was sent out without any modifications, and so, we might need to see if it's something else that's happening programmatically that's causing it not to run on your computer for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, and same for you, Christine, if you want to reach out to me, we can schedule some time to take a look. Next question, if a person is in a home by themselves 24 hours per day, is dedicated supports also entered? Rhonda, would you like to take that one?
Sure, I can try to take that one. Robert, so, if the person is home during the day, it was a question, is dedicated support? So, if the person is not engaged in meaningful day services, maybe they have retired, or there's some health things going on as per our guidance in the waiver and the policy, then yes, we would indicate dedicated hours.
Great, thank you. Another question regarding transportation, what hours are billable if the person is picked up on a bus and taken to their group or community outings?
If the person is picked up by a metro bus or some community bus and is going to meet their group in the community, the time that they're on the bus is not billable unless there's a staff person with them and engaging them in the services activity.
It also depends on the service, too.
Great. Is this provider fiscal impact analysis tool going to be utilized one time by January 5, or how often do we have to utilize this tool? Drew, you want to take that one?
Uh, yeah, so, similar to some of the things we talked about last week around what's the intent of this tool versus what's not the intent. So, the tool is not meant to replace any of the current fiscal reporting structures that providers currently do with DDA, but really just a point-in-time fiscal impact of looking at the transition from PCIS II to LTSS for the planning document. And so, yeah, the plan is not currently to do this multiple times, but really to help, you know, providers model and look at what this looks like as you plan for transitioning into the new fee-for-service system, as well as provide data to DDA to better understand, you know, the fiscal impacts there and, you know, how providers are planning to utilize the services. So, it could be something that, you know, I know that a lot of folks on the call also heard from Robert last week about an ongoing iterative rate-setting process within DDA as a commitment that MTH has made. And so, it might be a tool that's used down the road, but I don't think it's going to be something that's an annualized process. I think this is really just as we're thinking about LTSS in future state, doing this, you know, this month to get a better sense of what it looks like for providers, and then, you know, potentially, as that rate-setting process continues in future years, maybe coming back and doing it a second time. But I would plan on this as a one-time process until, you know, future rates get developed in the future.
And Connie, we're going to extend the same invitation to you, just send me an email, and then we'll schedule a time to sit with you to walk through it, the tool. Thank you. Okay. Please show an example under meaningful day services, Drew.
Sure, so let me pull it up, let me make it bigger so that nobody feels like we're at the eye doctor today. So, again, with meaningful day services, a little bit of a different outlay when compared to the community living group home or supported and shared living, where, again, the focus here is on the yellow boxes as the primary inputs that are going to make some driving decisions, as well as the participant-by-participant utilization. So, as a reminder, one of the key components for agencies to be aware of, the workbook is set at an assumption that services are operating at 50 weeks per year. We know that some organizations are going to have different business models, and so, you might be in operations 48 weeks per year, or some even at 52, and so, that is an input to check and to modify as needed. You'll see if we modify this to 48 weeks, it'll update in the calculation in the workbook below. So, please do check that and put an average there for your agency that makes the most sense. The other yellow inbox or input at the top is around PCIS II revenue. So, again, this is the aggregation of day services, that day service revenue that is currently being billed through PCIS II, that's going to give that delta between the LTSS revenues and the overall PCIS II revenues. So, let's put in an example. So, again, I'm going to put in myself here as the example with the initials. And so, the way that this sheet is structured for meaningful day, and we're in the meaningful day standard rates, so, again, just a reminder that we do have two tabs for meaningful day, we have the standard rates and the geographic differential rates. The only difference between the two sheets is the rate that populates here in line nine. So, go back to our standard rates. So, again, what we've set this up as is we've got the quarter-hour services that are all grouped together. So, we've got career exploration with the three iterations of that service, we have community development with the iterations of that service, day habilitation, employment services, all as quarter-hours. Then, we get into the monthly services, right? So, here, we have the employment service, follow-along supports, and then last, we have the milestone payments. So, again, for the, for the career, so for the 15-minute units, what we're asking for, so because we have a multiplier here of weeks per year, so we want to put in how many units, quarter-hour units, do we anticipate somebody is going to use in a week, right? And so, with the move to LTSS, the piece that we're trying to model here is the ability to mix and match services for the participants to meet their needs and their supports and their PCP goals. And so, you can input different flavors of services across all of these components. And so, here, I'm going to put that, I'm going to do career exploration for, let's say, 16 units, which would be my first set of my day, so a little bit under four hours there in my week. What's going to do, community development, small group for another 16, that's going to put me at 36. I'm going to do day habilitation, small group for, let's say, 40 units. And so, what you can see, right, is across the top, it's multiplying the number of quarter-hour units by the billing rate to give me a weekly total at $174.40, and then an annualized total based off of those 50 weeks at $8,720. And so, across the top there, in that top hour under the quarter-hour, it's adding up by the service line. If I scroll all the way over the side, it's adding up at the total per participant. So, what this is meant to do is show for kind of the way that you're classifying revenues, or you're thinking about kind of bucketing services and revenues, it's providing that roll-up of all the individuals that you support, but then on a line-by-line basis for each participant. It's a little bit different for the inputs for the monthly services as well as for the milestone services. So, for the monthly service, again, this is just the number of months per year that the person is likely to use the service. So, here, I'm just going to put three months, and again, you'll see, we've got the rate multiplied by three months, which gets our annualized total. On the milestone payment side, so what we're asking for here is if somebody is going to be participating in a milestone service, then a zero is, we are not anticipating that milestone to be met or achieved during that year, and a one is that we are anticipating in the year that that would be something that would be, that the individual would meet or would achieve, and that we would build. would meet or would achieve and that we would build. And so again, you can select all the three milestones if it's anticipated that, in this example, I would need all the three milestones throughout the year for employment services. And then again, you just see that since each of those is a single payment, that that gets calculated up at the top. You know, one, one thing to be mindful of in the workbook is we don't have a check in the workbook to make sure that the number of units being entered is not going to exceed a, you know, 30 hours or 40 hours in a week. It does allow you to input the, however many units you, you, you want into the workbook. And so, you know, the, the challenge with that is potentially over inflating what you think PC, or what you think LTSS revenue might look like. And so just be mindful as, as you're inputting that, that you're not exceeding what you think will actually be, be billed or what is allowable to be billed, because the workbook won't kick that back to you.
Great, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Drew. Will the BRIC rate construct be shared with the providers? Yes, we will share a, a copy of, of the rates and the components driving the rate. We have requested a, a final master rate file from the actuary. So once we get that and then do our own QA check, we'll make that available. Drew, do you mind going back to the community living group homes tab? And is there, so besides these inputs, there's no other inputs, is that correct?
That is correct. Well, so the only other input that we didn't talk about here would be on the PCS2 total. So again, this is asking for the total annualized billing for participants in a home under PCS2. And what that's going to give you is again, the delta between the two, so we'll model it both ways. So yeah, previously, I apologize, me add an extra zero there. So if previously your annualized revenues for, for the home was $450,000, then it would show you that there's a 54 net positive, $54,000 delta or 12, 12% increase. Similarly, if you were to say that previously in PCS2, the revenues for the home were 525, it would show you a negative delta or a decrease of 3.5%. That data, again, just so everybody's aware, gets rolled up into this top tab, or this top component of the tab, that shows your ongoing net differences between the two billing structures.
Great. I have a question related to community living group homes. In community living group homes have, in a house that has three different individuals, why does it appear they all have the same annual base when that is not the case in PCS2 or LTSS?
So I, I can talk about that, Robert, from the, the structural component of the workbook and how it's been built, and then if you want to speak more to it about the rate development itself. So, well, I guess it's a little bit hard to separate these two. So I'll start and then Robert pass it to you for more detail. But the, the inputs for this are based off of the, on LTSS, the number of people in the home. And so, you know, this allows for the rate structure, it's either a home with overnight or without overnight, and then it's based off of the number of people in the home. So the, the base rate in the way that the workbook structures and in the way that the, the rate file that we were provided is built, is that that base rate is constant. Then what differs is the use of dedicated supports. And so again, what we see when we come to the far right here is while the base rate was the same for all the three people in the home under LTSS, the per participant billing annually is different because we've now added in the unique component of dedicated hours for each of the participants. And Robert, I don't know if you want to talk about it more from the rate side or not there, but that's, that's how the workbook functions.
Okay, yeah, so if, if you need further explanation or guidance on that particular question, please send me an email, but we'll definitely, all of these questions will use to revise our FAQ document to keep it updated. Someone made a comment, Drew, that, that's interesting. It says, I think the issue is the workbook does not work on older versions of Microsoft Office. This individual tried to use Microsoft Office 2010, and, and they found that the, the tool didn't work, but when they used 19, they had no issues.
Interesting. So that is something that we ran into at testing and we, it was an issue with using, but this is part two technical, so I apologize for those who aren't in the weeds on Excel, but the difference between a V lookup and an X lookup. So we had modified it to, to V lookups to address the, the version control, but it could still be a little bit of an issue for, for, you know, pretty old versions of Excel. If that is the case, if, if, you know, we can definitely work with folks and try to figure out a workaround if needed. But this should work for, for most of the, the available versions of Excel that are out there. We did try to make that sort of work across versions.
Great, thank you. Trina, this is Robert. Do you mind taking yourself off mute to ask your question?
Hey, Robert, people, who was the person that needs to be unmuted?
Oh, I'm sorry, Trina Dowden.
One more time?
Trina Dowden.
Okay, I'm unmuting her.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't do it. And the question, the question is, is I see that a lot of these units, because I'm in the billing perspective, okay? So I see a lot of quarter hours instead of just day rates. Are there any services that is, that would be a day, like for billing purposes, be billed daily to where we're not having you do any conversions?
So, hi, Trina. So functions from the workbook side, the community living group home is daily and would not require a conversion. It does have the ability to put in the utilization factor for days per year. Same is true with supported and shared living tab, where it's based off of a daily rate. And then under the meaningful day services, I believe they're either quarter hour, monthly or milestone payments. So I, I think most of them under the LTSS rates, or at least how we've structured the workbook, are based off of the transition that DDA has been making towards quarter, quarter hour unit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Question regarding support services, how do we report PCS2 revenue? This may not be an apples to apples comparison. For instance, behavioral consultation and brief support implementation amounts in PCS are annualized for all individuals. PCS2 budget amounts may be partial only from July 1, 2021 to an interim PCP date other than June 30, 2022. And Connie?
So I, I
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Robert. I was going to say, I mean, I can maybe start. I, I think part of that might be also really good for, from the service side for Patricia or for Rhonda. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to get this as apples to apples as possible. And so, you know, it, it is a little bit tricky to walk from one system to the other, from different units to different units, in some cases, different services or definitions of the different services or definitions. And so we, we do want agencies to, you know, do their best to, to include as much of the comparable data, data as possible. I'll let Rhonda and Patricia speak specifically around some of the behavioral services. But an example to that, that, you know, I think is a little bit easier, at least for, for me to draw parallels to, is under community living group home services. So, you know, one of the big differences is, you know, the base rates under PCS2 and, you know, different matrix scores within the home, as well as the use of add-on hours. And so what we're asking is, you know, and part of the reason we've built the PCS2 input is to account for some of that nuanced differences between the two systems, so to roll all of that up for the home, for all the participants in the home, and, and to include it into one bucket of, of group of all revenues. And, and so that's our goal, or, you know, that was our attempt to try to get away from some of that kind of difference, but I know it, it's not perfect, and it's hard to make it perfect, but hopefully that flexibility allows easier inputs.
Yeah, Drew, this is Rhonda, and looking at the question, which says that brief support implementation and behavior consultation in PCS2 are annualized for all individuals. So that would be the amount you would note in the PCS2 section. For the LTSS section, I think that's what you're referring to in terms of maybe only being partially authorized due to an interim PCP, or maybe a revised PCP. I would suggest you look at what those services you're going to need for the year and put in that yearly amount. Because Drew, it's my understanding that the input for the services would be for an annual year, a full 12 months, is that correct?
That's correct, thanks, Rhonda.
Hey Drew, this is also, it's going to be a little bit hard to match from apples to apples, only just because some providers were providing that services, some weren't. We also changed this from one hour to quarterly, so things may just be a little, this service may be just a little bit off. So it just really would be good to foresee what is in the current plan and what are you forecasting for the services?
Yeah, thank you, Tricia.
Okay. All right, so there's a question regarding three-person home. Says we have a three-person home with a person funded under the autism waiver. For this tool, do I use two or three people since one person is funded autism waiver? Rhonda, would you like to take that one?
Sure, from my perspective, you would use a two-person home. I mean, you would note for two persons, and the funding that are associated and the staffing for the two-person home under the DDA operated waiver program need to be specifically for those two participants that are funded by DDA. In other words, you wouldn't be sharing resources with the autism waiver, because the rate is specific for the two people funded through the DDA program.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Question related to personal supports. Oh, sorry, it shifted. Whenever a new question pops up, it shifts the entire screen, so my apologies. When there was a transition of the personal supports program to hourly units, there was a significant decline in utilization. Many providers expect a similar decline in the transition from current daily billing to 15-minute billing. How should providers address this within this impact analysis? Rhonda, any thoughts on that one?
Sure, I think what we really are looking at is what are people, person-centered planning teams, discussions, looking at people's preferences and interests and the services that are going to help them with their trajectory towards a good life. So really what we're, we're looking at is what services, day services that they're getting, that you've got authorized in PCS2, and then looking at those services noting that there'd be flexibility within the meaningful day services, and noting those units that you'll be providing through LTSS.
Yeah, and I would also add to this is that because of a person's choice in, in maybe not showing up for a service, that you may want to start forecasting maybe some, some absence days or not, not wanting that service. That way you don't overestimate.
Great, thank you. Question related to community living group home. When selecting home type with overnight, it appears those rates reflect each person. However, awake overnight approval in the house is usually for one person approved for one-to-one and not for the other people in the house. This would make the per participant billing total incorrect, right? Or how is that, or how does that work with ensuring the awake overnight rate reflects that specific person?
Yes, that's a good question, Robert, and I think it's really important that, that we distinguish, there's a difference between selecting overnight supports versus dedicated hours. And so in the example that Drew went through, he noted that the home would have overnight supports, which is based on the business model from the provider. So everybody in that home would have the rate for overnight supports because it's being applied to the site or that home. Now, if, if Drew needed dedicated hours, those would be additional hours that you would be noting specifically for Drew. And so they're two separate things. Overnight support and dedicated hours are two different things.
Thanks, thank you, Rhonda. Question, the November 1st, 2021 rates on the LTSS website had steps with the number of clients. This rate chart doesn't. Was this a change? Or was the wrong chart used?
So Robert, from the, from the rates and this, what might be being referenced are the PCS2 rates that are up on the website that have the, the matrix score in PCS2. That is not something that's included here, and so it might just be a difference in what's being referenced between the, the rates under PCS2, because I think those might have been updated with the ARPA increases that were applied.
Yes, I think you're right, Drew. Gary, if that's not the case, please reach out to me with, we may need more information to, to better answer your question. Should we include or allow the 18 vet hold days? Drew, you want to take that one?
So it's, it's a good question. So there are assumptions in the rate model to account for, for vacancies. What I'll tell you is, I, I think similar to what Patricia was noting and how I would fill this out if, if I were you. And I think what I would do is I would assume, I would account for that in my utilization and, you know, and not overestimate. I would be a little bit more conservative in the estimation. So, you know, if, if you think that you're going to hit a lower utilization and you're going to, you're going to have a vacancy that exceeds that 18, I think the, Robert, you'd have to validate, I think the 18 might be what's built into the rates, but I can't speak to that definitively. But yes, I, I mean, I would account for your actual utilization. I think once the DDA is able to release the components of the BRIC, that'll be a little bit more prescriptive in what's in those components in the rate, and so that, that might be helpful. But I would account for your agency-specific vacancy factor and put it in my utilization if I were completing this.
And I, I think, Drew, I think there's a difference between vacancy factor versus the residential retainer days of 18 days.
That's a good point as well. Yeah, good clarification, Rhonda.
Great, thank you. There's a question, how do I find the rates, the PCS2 rates since the PCS, PCS2 website is down? So, so PCS2 is down, however, the website is back up and running. However, the website is back up and running, um, and the rates are posted, you know, on our website. Now, I did hear today that, um, they may have restored the website from, you know, an earlier version. And so I don't know what, I didn't go to check the rates to, to, to ensure that those are the, the rates that have the ARPA 5.5% added to them or not. So, um, that's the only caveat there. And, um, as far as the PCIS two rates are concerned, the, the rates are based on region. So you, you would have to, um, select the, the, the region that your agency is in in order to find out, uh, what the rate is for that particular reason. So there's not like a, um, like an LTSS where you have a rest of state rate and one geographical differential. Is there a number of weekly staffing hours expected in the base rate for community living group homes? Or will that be determined by the provider?
This is Rhonda. Yes, there is a, um, expected number of base, um, hours in community living and that's noted in the DDA PCP service authorization provider billing guidance. I believe we are updating that to reflect some of the numbers of discussions with, um, Max, Robert. So just a note for all on the call.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, we still have about seven minutes left. There any more questions?
Robert, I have seen in a couple of, um, spots, a question about when is DDA hoping to have this returned back to them? And, and maybe how to have it submitted back to DDA?
Sure, you, you're, you're referring to the completed tool?
Yeah, yeah, about when, when should agencies try to have this tied up and, and where to submit it back? And then maybe would be helpful to just go over ongoing technical assistance as well with, with regional offices.
Yeah, so, um, the deadline for returning the tool is January 5th of 2022. If you don't think you're going to meet that deadline, then please reach out to me so that we can, uh, work with you to, to get your, um, fiscal impact analysis turned in as soon as possible. Once you have completed the fiscal, uh, impact analysis, will please, uh, send it to my email address. Robert dot white, oh, I said, I was going to put in the chat, I will put in the chat, but it's Robert dot white, number two, at Maryland dot gov. Uh, and please make sure that you, uh, put fiscal impact analysis in the subject line. And again, if, if you need technical assistance, uh, please reach out to your respective regional office. All of the fiscal leads there have been trained on the tool and there's, you know, um, readily available to help in, in assisting you. In order to ensure that you get the tool turned in on time. Um, I, I did also receive, uh, several, uh, questions about the sta- status of PCIS two. Um, what I can tell you is that, um, we are working on a communication that will go out, uh, to, um, our DDA providers later this evening. Uh, but in the interim, uh, providers should continue to use their downtime procedures. There has been, we've been given no timeline as to when the system, uh, will, will come back up. I know that we are working very diligently and Medicaid is a high priority for the department. We've, uh, brought several vendors on board to help us scale up uh, in order to, you know, uh, address and get these systems, uh, back up and running. Uh, but in the interim, please, uh, continue to use your downtime procedure. So, um, someone was asking me about downtime procedures and I apologize if I'm introducing, uh, new lingo that I brought with me from the healthcare industry. But basically it's a procedure, um, that most agencies have as part of their business continuity plans. Um, you know, we're so reliant on IT, um, and computers these days that in the event, uh, that a system goes down, you know, if we don't have an alternate process in place, it could have a significant impact on our operations. And so what most, uh, agencies will do is they'll have forms available. So instead of recording attendance, for example, in, into PCIS two, they would just fill out paper. Once the system comes back up, then, you know, part of a downtime procedure is usually, uh, the individual will take the papers and go in and, and do the inputs into the system. I don't know, um, I'll have to ask, uh, my colleagues here if there's a different term, um, that is used in the DD community that may be more familiar to you.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's contingency plans if, you know, what do you, what do you do if you're not able to submit? What happens, you know, if you're not able to submit things to PCIS two, those types of things? So, um, your quality assurance, your business processes, your contingency plan, your emergency backup plan, those types of things.
Can you?
Robert, I did just see a question coming in, or yeah, that I think probably in the same spot around the most recent version of the tool. Um, and so I'll, I was just gonna jump in really quick. The, the file labeled revised 12, 3, 2021 is the most current that, um, has been released and how does the same working version that we're showing here in the webinar today?
No. Yes, um, we are recording all of these fiscal impact trainings and, um, we'll, we'll get them uploaded to the, to the website, uh, as soon as possible. Once we get the okay, um, that we can go in and, and edit. In the interim, uh, we are prioritizing information as being updated on the, on the website until we've resolved the, the, uh, the network outage.
Robert, did you want anybody to bring you about Friday's, um, session?
Yes, thank you, Patricia. So we are at time, there are a few more questions coming in last minute. We'll be sure to get those answered and we'll update the FAQ, uh, document. We are, um, having another session on Friday. And let me see, is that, uh, 1:00 PM? Yeah, we'll send out the, the, I, I don't have it on my calendar yet, but we'll send out.
So if you register for Friday, you didn't have to register for today. And if you registered for today, you, you should have gotten the email with that information so you wouldn't have to register twice. So when you get the, when you, if you got a constant contact and also register, it gives you those two options and you can attend both of them. Donald, do you want to add anything to that?
It is at 1 o'clock. It's from 1 to 2 on Friday.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Robert, can I ask a, um, self-serving question to the group while we still have them for the next 30 seconds? Prepping for Friday. Yeah, today's webinar was a little bit different, how we structured it, trying to make it a little bit more of a live working session. Just, just wondering from the group's perspective, if this is helpful, if it's useful to structure it this way versus a formal presentation? Just so, you know, we're using everybody's time as, as effectively as possible coming up on Friday as well. All right, seeing a couple of response coming in as yes. So thank you all. Sorry, Robert, I tried to catch you off there. But very helpful to, to see if this is working for agencies.
Yeah, thank you. And yes, if the tool will not populate the rates correctly, um, please send me an email. And again, we'll set up, uh, some, some private time to work with you to find out what the issue is. Okay, great. Thanks, everyone.